Open the meeting. Hi, everyone, please know that this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded, so, so, um, I guess, as always, we'll, we'll start with open session. Anybody here for open session? Together?
Together.
Okay, so you can either stay there or come on up, it's up to you.
I'll stay here.
Okay.
Um, I'm Carol Whitney.
Hi.
I live on Williamsville Road. I am also on the parish committee for the First Parish Unitarian Church. We have got a bid and want to start doing our roof. And now we have to come up with the money to pay the people. The power HRG would like to have the check at the time they finish their project, which will take about four days. Now, we met with the CPC committee and we looked over a contract between the town and the church. Now we need to know how we can get the actual funds, because as I said, the company likes to have a check in hand when they drive off the property.
Okay, um, how much?
Sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and eleven cents.
Okay, approximately.
We were, no, that is a
I gotcha.
It's, this is, this company does not get into the project and then say, oh, this has gone wrong. We need to add X amount. No, this is set. No, it's stone, but it's set.
It is ten thousand less than we put in for.
Okay.
We, we rebid it, because we had bid it before, because it's been a year we were in the process.
Sure.
So as soon as we got the grant, then my daughter Nancy bid it again, and so we were thrilled. We didn't have this company the first time.
Okay. So you wanna sort of, wh- where are you at with this?
So, um, just not to be confused with, with our bidding processes, so they don't fall under municipal bidding guidelines, that when they're saying bidding, they're contracting on their own. So they're applying for a grant. We sent the CPC grant to be reviewed by legal. Uh, they were comfortable with the, the grant agreement, sent it also to the CPC. In terms of borrowing, so the way that it was structured is about seventy-three thousand in the town meeting warrant article. And I'm, I'm using just simple numbers for understanding, but half of it was to come out of a reserve funds, which are available now. And then half of it was to be borrowed. So it just turns out that we're also borrowing for the fire truck that was approved a couple of years ago, and the DPW truck that was approved two years ago. So this can be rolled into that borrow, which we had already initiated, uh, which is to be completed by December first. Is, is the date that we can give.
So, so how this will go into that borrow, under what term? Or in what term, through what term, as far as a payoff? Or how's that all, is it?
So we, we have, we'll be having a few discussions about that.
Okay.
Uh, but right now, we're banning it for a year, so we are basically paying principal and interest, and then pushing off for a permanent borrow for another year, depending on if we're, we're gonna borrow anything else.
Good. Go ahead.
Uh, we, our contractor wants to come October seventeenth. And he, Joyce gave him a letter on the grant, and they said we didn't have to put up a third of it. So, uh, we really, you need to borrow it quicker, because we need to get it done before winter, you know, it's a
And actually, they have, because they couldn't get ahold of the, uh, building person to get a building permit, this week, they've actually put it off one week. But, as I said, they would like to have a paycheck when they are done, not yet in December.
Think, and
Is there any way to expedite that? Borrow from Peter and pay Peter back when Paul's money comes in?
So we initiated borrowing as soon as we found out that this money was needed.
Yeah.
But typically, it takes months to plan how we're going to borrow it, so this is our sped up schedule.
So we can't do it on and we're not, what about the amount you're saying he's taking from reserve?
It seems, seems odd they need it right then. I mean, when I ever do a job like that for town or anything, I never get my money, I never get handed a check. I usually have to wait thirty, sixty days.
Yeah, me too.
Well, that's how we got
Better pricing?
Better pricing.
Maybe. Go ahead.
Do you remember what the amount was that we weren't borrowing that was coming directly out of CPC, because I don't have the number in front of me?
Um, forgive my estimation, but it's about thirty-five thousand.
I mean, would that be something that he
Why, yeah, why?
Have, that you have for the remainder of the later?
So that's what I suggested to you, Carol, is that
Yeah, let me
That this, um, company could take a letter on good faith from municipality, that we're going through our borrowing process, and we'll complete the payment if they wanted to start now, or if it's a four-day project, um, maybe we can finish on December fourth.
I think they're worried about weather.
Yeah.
I am too, and I wanna see the roof. It's, it's not for a lack of desire, it's just we have to follow our due diligence.
So we take thirty-five, give them thirty-five, a check for thirty-five thousand dollar net now, and we would give them another check of thirty two thousand five, two hundred and fifty-three
Eleven cents.
And eleven cents. I love that eleven cents, on December first.
So, uh, we're gonna do everything we can, just, but just please don't say that we can give them a check tomorrow, we have to go through the warning process, and, and so it would be in the next available slot for us to cut checks.
The working process is just how they cut checks. It's not like they're trying to ignore.
So when is that, what's the next working process?
Don't you cut them every two weeks as you used to?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's gonna be
But if you tell them we're gonna give you a check tomorrow, it's, it's not gonna be tomorrow.
No, no, we're not gonna, it's not gonna be tomorrow.
Do we know that day?
So we're, we're rolling checks this week. We'll be taking vouchers for two weeks after that. It's the soonest we can get the money.
So the soonest we can do.
Mm. Thirty-five. What about the contract that, that, the lawyer's doing something? Have you got that?
The grant agreement, the CDC?
Yeah.
So that's another piece, but that's the CPC's piece. We have to sign.
Right, well, that, that's, we don't sign it, they execute it, and these guys execute it. These guys sign it, and the select board is the one that actually is the signer for the town.
Can you guys give a recommendation?
Uh, we had the meeting last week, so yes, we recommend the thing, but the, the
Check for So that contract would come in front of this board on the twenty-ninth.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
When?
The twenty-ninth.
Our next meeting.
Okay. I'm Barbara Hubbard, the treasurer.
The town's named after you, right, huh?
No.
Hubbardston?
Nope, my dogs were here in seventy-sixty-eight, but it wasn't my husband's. The Marines were here, but the Hubbard's weren't.
I do believe the contractor, given that he's performing this for a church and for a town, through a municipal vote, would probably be willing to work with that timeframe, is my guess.
And so you're saying we can get the check for which date?
I'm gonna go look at it exactly.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Is it, they're not cutting checks again till the thirtieth.
Is there one in that thing?
We're cutting them this week, this Thursday.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be, next Thursday would be the Thursday.
People isn't working?
So November first would be the next check.
No, we sit out in the hall.
Fifteen days.
Maybe in the bathroom?
And if it helps, I'll put this in a memo in writing to contractors, saying, these are our timeframes, and this is why.
I would think he'd be willing to, I mean, it's pretty standard. It's hard to get a check for sixty-seven thousand the day you're done.
Phone call visit.
But you do always ask.
Yes.
Or you, it can't hurt to ask. Okay, anything further from, from you guys on this for now? I mean, we'll just stay in contact, obviously, and, and, uh, doesn't feel like anything's gonna get in the way.
And the contract will be ready, so they won't get any hitches.
Yep.
Yeah, great.
All right.
All right.
I thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job getting that to come in under, that's all.
We try.
My husband's getting out of the hospital, he's got blood blots.
Okay, um, anybody else here for open session tonight? You guys in the back, open session items?
Nope, I was just here for the CPA.
Okay.
CPC.
Okay, um, all right, we'll just move on then. What's up?
No.
Okay. So announcements.
So announcements, uh, the bridge replacement hearing will be held tomorrow in the senior center at seven.
And this is Evergreen Road?
This is
Yeah, Mason Brook.
Mason Brook, Evergreen Road.
Evergreen Road.
There's been a fair amount of survey activity and all that sort of stuff happening, borrowings and stuff over the months or whatnot, so sure, anybody who's been around that street has seen something brewing.
They've also revised a lot of the plans, um, to decide how wide the bridge is gonna be, which has implications for us in terms of replacement costs for the land, where the water we're taking from the state, so, um, we've been pretty constant contact with legal. Um, and this, this, uh, meeting tomorrow, which I'll be going to help inform the rest of it.
Is there a timeframe on, uh,
Another option though.
The, the bridge actual, actual replacement, I believe it would be, um, they would go out to bid next fall.
Maybe, so it's, it's what state, and you'll know it just because of the terminology I've been using for the last few years, it's at the twenty-five percent design now? So it's at that, it's gotten to that sort of critical place where it triggers this hearing and, and all that, so as long as nothing weird happens, it could, it could proceed like that, but it's still gonna be a while.
Probably another year for bidding and then
Yeah.
finishing.
You mentioned the width, I think it's twenty-four feet, what, and that includes a bike lane?
Yeah, I meant more the, the width of the bridge versus the easement they need in order to accommodate it, which has implications on cost.
It's a pretty substantial, I don't know if you went through it at all, but it's, it's like a three million dollar project overall, it's not just a bridge, it's actually some eight hundred feet each way or something like that? It's a significant distance each way, as far as how they're gonna have to, you know how they do things now, if you, if you rebuild it, it's gotta have all the stuff, lanes and certain other accoutrements. Um, and, um, huh, anyway, okay. And then we have the Halloween hoedown.
Yep, Halloween hoedown will be at the police station again this year. They do it annually for music, food, games, candy. Um, it's sponsored by Bilchay of the Ruptured Duck, so October thirty-first, four to eight P M. in the parking lot. Trick or treat is that day from five to seven, we did get confirmation on that, um, so that will be going on, on the thirty-first. This weekend, the Lions Club, I know we've discussed it before, has the haunted hayride.
At Rieta?
Yeah, at Rieta, from fi- um, that will be on Friday and Saturday. Hayride starts at five thirty, Joyce, you know, and runs and runs into the night, and then the, um, senior center will be doing their annual rummage sale this weekend on Saturday and Sunday, eight to whenever.
And all that stuff is posted on the website?
All the stuff is posted on the website, yes. And then candidate's night is this Thursday as well, in the senior center.
And we have some people coming?
Yes, quite a few people coming.
Hosts.
Hosts. Nice.
Lot of events this week.
Donny coming?
I believe so.
Yes.
Um, see the floor in there?
I didn't check as long as
Yeah, it's nice. Really well done.
Yeah. Okay, so we got the election warrant next, we gotta sign that.
That's Joyce.
Hey, Joyce.
Howdy. Okay, so just the formality of, I guess, voting on and signing the five copies of the warrant for November sixth.
I'll make the motion to sign the warrant.
Second motion, discussion? On favor?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, how many you got, five copies?
Five copies, yeah.
Slide on down this way.
Here, give me those other ones, I'll get the signature copy out front. Make it a little easier. There's the three, yeah, the three questions makes it lengthy.
Well, last time there was a typhoon in something, remember we had to redo it?
You're right, you're right, yeah, we had, we had the wrong month, I think.
It was a data
We have the technology.
So they already did the floor, I think.
Gonna check now, it's already done. They finished it today.
Now are they gonna do real bowling in there?
Yeah, there is a bowling ball over there, I don't know why, I saw it.
Do we know when the porch is gonna be going?
Uh, no, but it's almost done, I mean, it's almost complete, but they said by candidate's night it will be done.
Yeah, great.
Who's doing that?
Shardier, contracting out of Templeton.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so they had the porch extended, the roof extended, railings up, stairs widened over there as well. Lot of work going on.
You got one more in your chest?
One, two, three, four. Very good, thank you.
Where is battery life?
All right.
Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. So we've got the, uh, Hubbardson tax title plan, you sort of prepped this on this a couple of weeks ago, I think?
Yes, so this is, well, I'll just get into the present, this is a public presentation, it's compiled by Sandy, our treasurer collector, talking about our tax collection efforts. And tax title is a specific reference to delinquent taxes or taxes that haven't been paid. So the purpose of this plan is to inform, uh, our town officials and residents about our plan to have the proper collection of delinquent taxes. Um, I think you'd be surprised that we collect, on average, ninety-eight point five percent of all taxes. Uh, sometimes you hear that taxes aren't collected, that's a very strong number, and I'll show you, uh, historical numbers in order to put that in context. However, the total amount owed to the town is still four hundred and two thousand, uh, and that extends back as far as, uh, we have delinquent tax records. So this collection effort requires a pretty persistent effort on, on behalf of all of our staff, and we're gonna talk about how we are approaching it. Please stop me.
That ninety-eight percent, that's the tax collection rate?
That's how much we take in, so we send out, we want a hundred dollars, we get ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents back on average.
That's, that's a real good number, because it was, you said you're gonna mention the previous history of the other numbers?
It's been pretty consistent for the last five years. Uh, so the, the tax collection process, preliminary bills are, are issued on July one and then November, November one, uh, we have a tax bill due in a couple of weeks, just to remind people. The actual real estate bill comes after we set the tax rate, which we'll be doing in the next couple of months, uh, and those are due on February first and on May first. So many ways to pay your taxes, our treasure collectors are open Monday through Thursday, we accept check, cash, credit card, can also send payments to the lockbox and the, uh, treasurer collector's office, it can be accepted either way, and payments can also be made twenty-four hours a day on the town's website with a transaction fee, this fee is set by the credit card company, not by us.
Is that a twenty-five cent?
Cent per transaction.
Per transaction, okay.
And then there's a secure mailbox outside the town clerk's office where payments can be dropped. So here's the five-year tax collection rate from two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. So you'll see, um, pretty consistent, Hubbardson's pretty good at collecting its taxes, uh, ninety-eight six-two, ninety-eight seventy, ninety-eight seventy, ninety-eight thirty-seven, and ninety-eight oh-six. The reason why seventeen and eighteen are lower is, first of all, there's been more time to collect those delinquent taxes, and, and also, um, formal demand letters and tax collection processes haven't started yet for those years, so we expect those to, to maybe even be in higher than those original numbers.
Ryan, well, the numbers, I believe in the past, were considerably lower, that's what brought the attention to the tax collector, it was in like the seventy percentile, and that's what raised the red flag.
No, I think it was like ninety-two, which ra- raised the red flag, like, it was just 'cause, 'cause, maybe not ninety-two, but it wa- it was still high, but, but, um, lower than other municipalities, uh, by a noticeable amount.
You, you'll have to remember, this is what we've collected now, so efforts to, to make up those numbers or to get them there have also been accounted for in these totals.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So this is what we have.
Also made corrections?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so this is an interesting slide, so this is delinquent taxes that we've received back, so you'll see in fifteen, sixteen, and then seventeen. Uh, we have some anecdotal evidence for seventeen, es- essentially, um, trying to figure out, because of the collection issue in the past, that, um, if residents owed money, et cetera, working through and trying to, uh, to help residents understand whether they'd submitted taxes, so there was some issues there. Uh, trying to give people, I don't wanna call it a break, but just to benefit the doubt. But since Sandy's come on, and then, um, I've also focused on this pretty well, we've had very strong collection rates in eighteen and nineteen.
Yeah.
And you'll see, uh, some of our efforts as to why. So that thirty-four thousand number is for FY nineteen as of October first, so that's first quarter.
Well.
So what is tax title? Um, I'm not gonna get too deep into the weeds here, but chapter sixty is what, uh, what tax title means, so taxes are, the final taxes are due on May first. Um, once a demand bill is sent out, residents have, uh, fourteen days in order to pay that demand bill, and then they're considered delinquent. So then the treasurer can put, um, put these bills into tax title under chapter sixty, and then perfect that municipal lien, which says that people owe us money. So if these taxes remain unpaid, the town can institute foreclosure proceedings and land court, which would result in loss of property.
What happens if we can't contact the owner? Is that, is there an, uh, a process for that?
So we would use our tax title attorneys, um, I won't pretend to be one, but they, they have ways to, to make sure that we're contacting the owner or to, uh, at least absolve the town of its responsibilities in the contacting method.
Oh.
So, um, this is, uh, basically what I just said. So if the deadline's not met, interest starts accruing, and this starts accruing the day of the past due bill being due. So although we can't take taxes until after May first, or can't take land for taxes after May first, uh, we do start accruing interest immediately when taxes aren't paid, at fourteen percent. Once they're in, um, in tax title, it's sixteen percent. So then we advertise our outstanding taxes, we set a date of taking, and we put these, uh, taxes into lien, attempt collection, and if necessary, start foreclosure processes. So this is our, uh, town-wide approach to collection, so it is the policy of our, of our staff in the town to deny permits, licenses, and other privileges to residents and applicants who are currently in tax title. So this has resulted in identifying some, some folks who, who may or may not know that they owed some taxes, and, and getting them to pay them. So all staff members are required to send applications to the treasurer collector for her to sign off, to, to make sure that we are compliant with this policy. Uh, we do contact residents and, and make sure that they're aware of it, and work with the residents to, to get through this process. Here's some of our current tax collection efforts, uh, we've advertised the FY, so there is a little delay in this, you'll see, but we've advertised the FY sixteen outstanding taxes and, uh, had a tax taking on August twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, so that if you've never had a backstak- tax issue, this puts you into tax title. If you then have issues later on, say, you didn't pay in sixteen and then you owe in seventeen, then you can just roll those into the tax title process, which is called subsequent, uh, tax title. Uh, we did that for FY seventeen in, on September fifth. Right now, we're researching outstanding taxes for seventeen, and notifying owners that unless they pay their taxes, um, the taking will occur at the end of November and, and early December, or early December.
Are there fixed, um, uh, fees, uh, interest, uh, all that sort of stuff, um, that are, uh, uh, explained to those who aren't paying?
Yes, so we send a letter and we explain, um, since this date, you've been accruing fourteen or even sixteen percent interest. And those fees will be due. We also have residents who are paying their back taxes submit several different checks, some of them have to go to Commonwealth, some of them have to go to our fee processes, and some of them go to us. So it's more than just our fees once you enter this process. So in eighteen, we'll be following the same process with the taking of, of, uh, May nineteenth, so we have to wait again that appropriate amount of time. So our plan is to send demand letters when they're available to existing property owners in tax title, to advise them of the town's right to foreclose, and encourage them to enter in a payment plan. So we do have the authority to enter into, to plans with folks, uh, to pay off taxes in a reasonable amount of time and a reasonable approach. And this can come into play when people unfortunately can't afford their taxes sometimes, and we need to, uh, work with residents. Uh, my office is also gonna send a letter explaining this, to try, um, say, a cheaper way to remind people, rather than the lawyers doing it, that their taxes are owed, and, and this is our processes and some of the consequences for not paying your taxes. Then we wanna start foreclosure processes with no less than three properties by the end of nineteen, so three doesn't sound like a lot, but we'll be targeting, um, it, it is expensive to go through a foreclosure, so we will be targeting the, um, most paying for your buck, as they would say. Uh, we also wanna file our proper documentation for the taking of low-valued land, so this is any va- in land that's valued under twenty-one thousand nine hundred and ten, there's a process that the state allows you to go through in order to take that land, this is because of the cost of foreclosure would far outweigh the value of taking that land. So there is a process that exists, it's just a little cumbersome, and, uh, we'll be working through that. Once the town has obtained ownership, then you auction these off. And some of the old archaic laws are kinda funny, and it's the treasurer collector literally runs an auction in the street, um. Love to see Sandy out there doing that. So conclusions, we are aggressively addressing our neglected backlog of delinquent taxes, trying to bring that on to the rolls. Uh, the way we understand this money comes in, back into the general fund and to free cash, um, and then interest payments sort of fill that gap between what was committed and what has been collected. The goal is to make the process current and focused on collection procedures in a fair way, uh, working with residents. The town staff will continue to train on procedures to make sure that they are aware of our task collection processes and why we do things. And the treasurer collector's gonna execute this, this comes from Sandy, her FY nineteen tax title plan is outlined, provide the board with an update no later than the end of the year, and publish this plan annually. Uh, a little earlier in the year than, than this, um, but we wanted to make sure we got this report correct.
Okay, hey, so is most of our, or, I guess, do you have any sense of what percentage of tax title is land versus structures?
Uh, not off the top of my head, but I do know that the remaining monies are difficult cases, uh, the cases you would sort of expect abandonments or uh, mortgage foreclosures, or, or people that have been working through processes for long, those are really the high-value targets, so to speak. And we actually expect to get some of those just through bank closing procedures, because we do have proper li- liens on them, we're just waiting for those liens to be executed.
Okay.
A lot of it's just paying attention, you know, to the process, and, and I, I really commend Sandy, this has been a focus of hers, it's not easy, it's cumbersome, it's time-consuming, but I've asked her to focus on it, and she's really running with it.
That's great, I mean, it's uncomfortable, it's a, it's a tough one.
It is, but most residents, when they know, they, they pay.
Yeah.
Some don't know, some of them, I don't know if they actually don't know, but I believe them.
Pretending, like it's one of them.
And, uh, they wanna come current, and a, a lot of them, you know, wanna do business with the town, and if you, if you hold the line with the permitting, which you should, then they, um, they, they do it.
Okay. All right, great, very informative, thank you. Um, so, hi.
Hi.
Do, we, we have you for seven, we're a little bit early now, do you have any, anyone else coming?
We're not sure, other school committee members were invited, but
Okay, all right, we'll give it a few minutes then, we, we have a couple of other things that we can take care of, that's all right.
Okay.
Um, all right, you wanna jump to the, uh, Borrego Solar Pilot Agreement, is that something we can do?
I think that'll be a little longer, we do volunteer appreciation, is about that.
All right.
Yep, so the volunteer appreciation, we did that last year.
Yeah, pins.
Um, right, pins, so a lot of people have pins, and what we've been doing is, when people sign up, we've been giving them the pins, because they're obviously volunteering.
And you bought a thousand of them.
And I bought like a thousand of them, yeah, I didn't buy a thousand, I think it was a few hundreds, but
Okay.
One thousand of them.
No, okay, so anyways, quite a few, so we have a backlog, but anyways, so the people that are coming in, they get them, um, so we'd like to do that again this year with something a little bit different.
Okay.
Um, so we do have an idea in mind, we don't really wanna say what it is, um, just because we want people to be surprised by it.
Okay.
Um, but we do have a date in mind, which we had for, it's the only December meeting, so I think that was December tenth. We'd kinda like to go with the same structure that we did before, prior to the selectman meeting.
Yep.
So we wanted to make sure that you guys were on board with doing that again, and doing it be- on that date.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wait, did, did Anne show up last time? Did Anne go, did one of the, no, anyway, that might not be a bad idea, to at least extend an invite to state
I don't think so, but Mm-hmm.
Senator and rep to see if they wanted to be part of that as well.
Yep. Wants to vote, sir.
Sure, yeah, I know.
We'll make, so we'll make them commit a candidate tonight.
Whoever is voted in needs to be.
Good one, will you come back to this room?
We should come to the volunteer
Okay, all right, might as well get, get going with you guys, all right?
Okay.
All right, wanna come on up? So on our, um, agenda, we are joint meeting with Q R S D. And, um, if you guys wouldn't mind just, um, introducing yourselves, and then we'll sort of kick off the meeting.
First, I wanna see how nice it looks in here compared to past years.
A lot different, huh?
Nothing like when I
It works very nice.
Hi, I'm Sheila New, I'm assistant, I'm
Oh, my God!
I'm still saying assistant.
You caught her on
Superintendent.
Cheryl DeVal, Director of Administrative Services, Debbie Chamberlain, School Committee.
Okay. All right, well, thanks very much for coming in, I think we're just sort of, um, you know, now that we've got new administration, we're, we're, uh, hoping to, um, you know, maybe do this periodically to, to just sort of be face-to-face and talk about, you know, where the district is, where the district's going, how that may affect our town specifically, and, and maybe others as well, so um, once again, hopefully this can be something, we're not gonna ask you to come here all that often, but now and again, just to sort of have an update, so, I don't know, Ryan, how do you, how do you wanna format this?
We, um, we sent a
Yep.
Just a tentative, uh, agenda, so that would be introducing the new superintendent and her general philosophies, um, an update on the new brain tree situation.
Yep.
Talking about communication, about the budget, and school to town.
Yep.
Procedures, winter closings, emergency incidents, and then, um, Jamie made a question about the international back alert program, so it's
Do we have a copy of that?
Uh, we sent it by email, I can put it up here, it's
Okay, yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay, yeah, if you don't mind.
You don't give me a, it'll take a minute, but.
Okay, but the first one on there was basically.
Just introduce the new superintendent.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'm Sheila Muir, um I have um, I'm pretty much a lifelong resident of Barry. Um I'm a graduate of the Quabon Regional School District, I um worked in the district about twenty years off and on, I. Um started as a math teacher in the district, and then I moved into um administration at the middle school and the high school. Then I left for a few years to go to another district, and then returned um about eight or nine years ago. Uh to be Assistant Superintendent, and um recently was named Superintendent in in the spring. Um so my ex- I've had a lot of experience, um I've, again, I've lived in, I live in Barry, I've lived in the community most of my life. Um I'm very committed to our communities, um you know, I've I have relationships with folks in in all of the towns because. I'm sort of, you know, one of those people who was born and and grew up here, so I I know a lot of folks, um.
How has your, um let's jump in, but just to jump in.
Go ahead, please, please do.
How has the uh the inner office transition gone?
So it's gone, I think it's gone very well, maybe just showing.
No, I have been, it's gone very well.
So what I did, one of the first things that I did, um as as anyone in a new position would do, was create an entry plan, I I brought copies of that for you. Um but one of my first steps was to sit with each member of the central office team and ask a series of questions about the transition and all of the principles as well, so I did that. Um late in June and early in July, to make sure that the transition was um would go as smoothly as possible. Uh I think that was well-received, um and I plan to continue those um. Types of uh meetings with town officials, with um individual school committee members, there's there's a series of um meetings that I would like to set up with individuals. My um my goal was to have all of those meetings completed by the end of November, as I'm getting into the job, I'm finding that it's probably relatively unrealistic. Um so I may uh I may extend that a little bit, but the purpose is, again, to to get out and meet people, to learn. What uh their perspective is on our school district, on our work, um and to start to build relationships um that I don't already have with uh with folks in the community, parents as as well as um. As, you know, town officials and um and others. And then at the end of that entry plan, I will uh be presenting um some conclusions to the school committee that will um potentially recommend some. Uh updates or changes to the new strategic plan that we still haven't finalized, but we're also working on a strategic plan currently for the district.
So you obviously provided support to the superintendent, to Dr. Marshall over the last whatever, eight or nine years.
Yes.
And I know, obviously, you have Cheryl who does a tremendous amount, but what um sort of things have you done to replace your old position?
So uh what we did was, um we we took my position and we split it, and um we created two directors of um. Directors of Curriculum for five, their titles are Directors of Teaching, Learning, and Support. Um one for the elementary level and one for the secondary level, we um hired two folks from outside of the district, um one is from um was a. Longtime principal in the Quabon Regional School District, she's um Colleen Muha, and she's uh working at the elementary level. And Adam Kuchori is um was a Director of Curriculum in um Springfield, as well as most recently in Southbridge, and he's joined us at the secondary level.
These full-time positions?
They are um f- full-time, but they work, they have a reduced work schedule, so most of central office, we work, you know, year, a year.
All year.
They're working two hundred and ten day um position, so to it was my, it was a rela- relatively revenue-neutral decision. Um we took my salary, my previous salary, as well as uh the salary of a couple of other positions that we were, people that were retiring that we weren't going to replace, and we um created those positions.
Okay.
Okay, great. Um uh I guess, you know, the elephant in the room, which is gonna remain an elephant for a while here, might as well just get right to it, and I know we have a joint meeting later on this week with all the. The select boards, which I assume we're all coming.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um relative to uh to to Braintree, but um, you know, I've been on the the task force, the Q E M P for three or plus years. And this just personally um surprised me when it came up, sort of felt like it came up kinda quick. So could you just talk to us a little bit about what what's going on?
Yes. So at the um, in in the, during the summer, the school committee voted um to um. Move all of the students from Ocam, from New Braintree and Ocam into the Ocam Center School and keep the New Braintree Grade School um. Open for um to try to find an alternative use for that building, and and then um or later in the summer, um decided to rescind that vote after getting some um. Legal advice.
Okay.
As to um thinking that that might not be the best strategy to use going forward. Um subsequent to that, in um early September, at their s- at their meeting, they um again voted, they voted to um. Take uh take the first initial steps to um close the New Braintree Grade School per the closing process in the regional agreement. Um subsequent to that, um I and of um the Hubbard, the um New Braintree. School committee member and our principal from N- New Braintree, Ocam, met with the um New Braintree Select Board to um. Let them know of the vote and to answer any questions they might have. And um the next steps are the meeting on the eighteenth, which is which is a joint public meeting of all of the boards of selectmen from the member towns. There will be representatives from the school committee there, and Cheryl and I will be there. Um there'll be one representative from each of each town from the school committee at that meeting.
Volunteer for Hubbardston.
Okay, thanks.
And um. The outcomes of that meeting aren't well-defined in the regional agreement, um it's really. We view it as an opportunity to provide information to the select boards and to answer any questions that they might have. Um around the school closing process and what that might mean uh for any of the towns. Uh we have um the school committee and Cheryl and I have come up with some ideas around what information folks might like. Um to hear at that meeting, but um what we expect is that there will be questions that we may might not be able to answer at that meeting, and if so. We'll prepare that information for the following meeting, which is a joint public hearing held by the school committee on, and that one's scheduled for November first.
And then there's like a six-month time period where it's gonna go to the town, or I can't remember all the details, three months, okay.
So the town must hold a um a town meeting no sooner than three months and no later than six months. After the school committee takes a vote, so the vote that they took in October, uh excuse me, in September. Was not the vote to initiate, it was to initiate the process, but there's an a second school committee vote after these.
Not binding, not in that sense.
After these two um.
Hearing.
Hearing, the meeting and the hearing that they would need to take in order to move the process forward.
Has there been any feedback from New Braintree residents on this to speak of, or?
We did a survey um early in the summer of New, or I guess it was actually at the end of the school year of New Braintree Parents, the school-based. Um the results were overwhelmingly in favor of moving all students to the, to one school, to the to the Ocam Center School. Um there has not been any survey that I know of, that we have done, about from New Braintree residents, other than, other than um parents of students.
How about the select board?
The select board, then, though, just like.
We did, we we met with.
Just last week, right?
Oh, I've met, we've met with parents twice.
Okay.
Um. We met with parents um prior to the. After the school committee rescinded their vote, we met with parents to explain to them that the students would be in two buildings um this year, and um. We also met with parents, I met with parents last week with with Trish Worthington, the principal, um just to sort of update them as I am you about what's happening. And what the process um will be. The New Braintree Select Board, um. They, I mean, they're they're not happy about their school being closed, they don't, they don't like it. Um but my purpose for meeting with them was really to say, um, you know, how amenable are you to to us trying to find alternative uses for this building?
That was my next question, yep.
Um. We had been working with Center of Hope, trying to find a way for them to rent some space in the New Braintree Grade School. The lease that we have with New Braintree doesn't allow us to um actually sublet any space in their building, so. It's difficult for me or any one of us as as representatives, representatives of the school district to solicit. Um occupancy for a building that we don't really have any control over in terms of whether we could lease space in it, so. It's it's a little bit of a difficult um conversation to have with potential, potential um tenants. Um but the New Braintree Select Board basically said, please continue to pursue um. Potential, potential um uses of this building if you would, so I'm actively doing that. I have not had a lot of um interest, but I am trying to turn over every rock that I can to find. Um someone who might use the building, and as, you know, as um we've discussed at the task force many times, and I'm su- sure that Dan has updated you. The idea is that if that building closes and reverts back to New Braintree, not only are they responsible for the the cost of that building, but they're also, the building is going to need a roof at some point. If it's no longer a school, then the SBA um grants that are available for school buildings, for roofs and windows and those kinds of things wouldn't be available. So um we're also trying to come up with some school-based uses for that building that might be appropriate, and but. Those aren't quick things that we can, you know, uh say, oh my goodness, you know, this is something that we need, and this is how much it's gonna cost, and we feel that the benefit of that to the students. Would be great, we're working on those things, but those things take time.
So you mentioned that you uh met with parents, and th- those that you met with, you said were very much in support of it. Can you give me an idea of what percentage of the parents are we talking about, as opposed to, for example, things I'm thinking about. We have a a core group of parents here who are very active and very supportive of the school, et cetera. But the usual procedure here is you have that core group, and then another group turns up at the ballot.
Mm-hmm.
So it doesn't, it doesn't go through as much as you get the impression it does, I'm just curious if.
Right. Well, I I didn't, I didn't bring the data, to be honest, about the survey, but um. The res- the number of responses, I would say, of the survey that we sent out was relatively low, it wasn't, you know, overwhelming. That everyone responded.
Mm-hmm.
Um but of the responses that we got, it was overwhelmingly in favor of putting all of the students together in Ocam Center School.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we feel really very strongly that educationally, it's better for all of those students to be together. Um it and it's also equitable, you know, across the district, K to six and pre-K to six students are all in one building. In those two towns, they're split, and it's diff- it can be difficult for families if you have a first grader. And that child is in New Braintree Grade School, and you have a fourth grader, and your child is in Ocam Center School. Transportation-wise, logistics-wise for families, it's not the easiest um scenario.
And just if I could add on to that from Mr. Williams, um the amount of families that have students. In elementary school from New Braintree is a very small portion of the voters.
Okay.
The town of, and we have no idea what those people think.
Mm-hmm.
At that point. No, we don't. And that was one thing the selectmen felt strongly, that they wanted to, you know, that they ne- would like information from the community at large, not just parents.
Yep. Well, that's um, I'm, I can't believe it's here. I just, I guess we'll just go go um observe the process and. Prepare ourselves um to understand what that process is.
Good luck, he's even. The agreement is not clear, and in in my opinion, neither is the attorney's advice, so it's very difficult.
No.
Great.
It is very difficult, and the attorney that um represented, that worked with the towns and the district when the regional agreement was um rewritten. Is no longer practicing, so our attorney is someone who had some knowledge, worked in that same firm, and had some knowledge of the regional agreement. Um from assisting a little bit, it didn't sound like a lot, um so but it, it's not clear.
I was on that committee, that's how I first got involved, and we thought it was pretty much ironclad.
You were. Exactly, exactly, until you start to use it and put it into place.
And now I'm reading, I'm like, why would we say that?
That's any negotiated agreement, you'd think it's good when you get to the end, and then you put it into practice, and you're like, what?
Yeah. I think, I think.
Yeah.
The intention is there of taking it from just the school committee to raise a hand and vote to close a building and putting it in the town's voter's hands was.
Yep.
I think that's good, but I think getting to that point was not as clear as we thought it was at the time.
And and.
And just, just to touch a little on the school closing, from my perspective, and I'm always welcome to take, you know, your thoughts to the school committee, that's, I'm there to represent Hubbardston, and. I would, did not vote in favor of this, and I think educationally, the kids should be together. Um I have not been supportive of the way that this process has been handled, starting last June. And, you know, I'll be happy to talk with you if you'd like to further or whatever, but um. I think educationally, it's definitely the best thing for the students, but. Being small towns, and I just think if this was in our town, you know, what would happen to our town, so. I'm hoping that this process maybe will change directions, and this will spark some conversations, because it can be stopped at any time. So I'm hoping that maybe after the next several meetings, maybe some of the towns like Hubbardston, you know, I know we have space issues, we could say, you know. Well, we could take this wing or that wing, and maybe it'll s- kinda spark some of the stuff we've been working on on the task force.
It's it's not, uh right, I mean, it's not a bad way way to look at it either of, you know.
I'm not hopeful that that's probably gonna happen, but.
But I'm just saying, once you're actually faced with something, you gotta deal, right?
And that's.
It's always been, you know, there's been lingering talks of all sorts of different scenarios, but if you're actually there, then you gotta start thinking.
And I, like I said, I did not vote in support of it, um either time, at any of the votes, I I did not. And it was more procedurally, that the way this has been handled, and Sheila and I have talked about it.
How's the um the the committee as a whole, are we saying?
They are, they wanted this process, I think there was only two of us that did not vote for it.
Okay.
Three, if three.
There were three, there were three. Um overall, just because it's such a long process, and we're gonna keep having the same conversations and be on the task force forever, and we we need to make some decisions. Please, Dan.
I know. Not forever.
So.
A long time.
So I think they were afraid if we don't start, we're gonna be, just keep having these same conversations, and I I do agree with that, but.
Yep, okay.
And and for the record, also, I I feel very similar to to um Debbie, I I feel as though, I mean, I would. Love nothing more than to keep that building open and find a financially sustainable way for that building to remain open, I think it's. I I feel very strongly that schools, that towns need schools, however, we have to make sure that our resources are going to the students, and that we put the students in the best educational situation, so.
And now there are only three grades there, is that correct?
Two grades, kind of, three classrooms.
Two grades.
So one kindergarten classroom and two first-grade classrooms, and next year, based on the um census of students. That we would have in kindergarten there, there would only be one kindergarten classroom in one first-grade classroom, so two classrooms.
I mean, we really could have picked, based on the numbers, we we could have probably closed two or three schools easily, so. If we enhance and add programs, then, you know, we can try to fill them up or rent, like we do the CAPS Collaborative, I think that's a fantastic program we have here, so. Hopefully, it's gonna change course, but, you know, and like I said, feel free to contact me anytime, and.
Alright, well, well, some of us or whatever will be there Thursday, and we'll hear some more about it, so. Okay, um so we've got, we've got communication, which is fairly broad. Um and under that, we've got the 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 budget and um school to town. Um Ryan, what do you mean, school to town, communication-wise, communication for the budget, and then communication relative to the school to the town?
Yeah, so some of these procedural things, uh that come up, like like this big discussion, it'd be nice to have a continued dialogue, Dr. Ryan talked about that, and then obviously, the budget is a bigger one, so. Some type of plan to continue to talk through the budget to make sure both sides understand each. Uh to include, uh when I present my budget. Uh to include, uh when I present my budget, perhaps having the school uh present theirs as well, so we can get a better understanding of. Of of the budget from the school perspective.
We have done that in the past.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to commit to it, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Oh, we're committed.
Yeah, as you know, I mean, we just said, we just went through, uh and this is the the genesis of the task force was was for capital planning purposes, right? And we just went through a a very extensive through a grant, right? Uh the capital um planning, you know, next five years sort of plan where all the departments in town, uh it was the Collins Center that came in?
Yes.
Uh all the departments in town um came and said, okay, by such and such date, here's the format you're gonna use for each of your projects, over five thousand dollars or some number, was it that? Over five thousand dollars, every committee, every department, okay, give it to the Collins Center here and they're gonna come together with a master plan. So this, that's sort of stuff really important to us and we're trying, we we're very organized here now, we've got great leadership and, you know, we're trying to get things done. You know, um you can see some of the road projects we've got going on, the sidewalk, the grants that we're going after, all that sort of stuff. And sixty percent of our budget's through you guys, you know, so that 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 is just more of a reiteration of of the commitment to us understanding where things are at. And we get it, there's a lot of considerations you guys have to make, but just making making sure, cause we do have big plans. So um it's it's just a reiteration of it and, you know, sitting down talking about it.
So I wonder if um, I asked this of um New Braintree as well because they, one of my goals is increased commu- is is. Effective communication with all stakeholders. Um so I asked them as well, you know, at what point in the budget process does it make sense for us to provide you information? Um our budget process is pretty much standard. We've been using the same, the same timeline for for many years. And Cheryl can speak to that directly because she's got it memorized. I don't know.
No, I don't, I have a binder. I am the binder queen. And I tabbed it at dinner.
I printed that page too, so.
Hey, did you?
Um.
It's the first tab. So unfortunately, I just don't think that our timelines go in sync.
True, right.
So um.
In no town.
But they'll, yes, probably, you know, with no town.
No.
Um but so if there's, if there's a way that we could come and see you during the process or.
I I think, I actually think this last year went well, you know, I I don't, I'm not, you know, there've been, and I know there are times when there are just surprises that you guys can't do anything about, you know. Those are the ones when I know you can't necessarily predict it, but those are the ones that crush us, right, as as little towns, it just does. And um it, that being said, um uh any chance that we get to be able to maybe flush out some of the things that aren't those outliers. That nobody can predict, that sort of a communication would help.
But one of the biggest outliers that outsiders that you cannot predict is chapter seven.
Yeah.
So I started this job twenty-three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And for the first six years of this job, I had the cherry sheet by February twenty-eighth. The law says that the governor's budget comes out on February twenty before February twenty-eighth. And that cherry sheet came on pink paper, snail mail, and I had it by February twenty-eighth for six, the first six years of doing this job.
Yep.
And you could take that to the bank, cause the number that was on there was a number that we were gonna get in the next fiscal year. But in the past year, when the governor's budget came out on January twenty-fourth, actually I have to say, Charlie Baker does a much better job. Than Deval Patrick in getting the budget out. Um but then when did, I don't even have it in here as to when the Hou- oh, House Budget released, the last week of April. Well, your assessment letters are due April thirtieth, so we get the House number the last week of April. The Senate came out in June. When did the conference committee meet and finalize it? July twentieth. So when that's the number one variable that you start with for our funding of our budget and it's fifty percent of the funding of our budget. And we don't know what we're gonna get until at least, cause you can't, you take the governor's number and you throw it out the window. Because right now, in the last few years, the House hasn't even paid attention to his numbers.
How far off? I mean, that's what I'm getting at, is it, you know, how, and I'm like, we're just, we're just talking here, but I'm just saying, like, i- is it? Can it really, really significantly be different?
Yeah, it can be really, really significantly different and in such, each each iteration of the state's budget, they can change your required local contribution by town. Which means start it all over again, because the base of your assessment is that required local contribution. And the law actually says that if we don't have a budget, we've had one for two years in a row. If you don't have a budget before those re- reiterations are done and minimum local contributions are set. I, we could have three out of the five towns vote their budget and the conference committee could change those regional um required local contributions. And the calculations have to be done again and you've gotta go back to those first first three town meetings that you have. So they have a s- significant impact on your assessments. Luckily, in the last two years, when they've done that, we've had our budgets before they did that.
Mm-hmm, but there's no guarantee, right?
No, there's no guarantee anymore and and it's just so weird that, you know, when I started the job, there it was, the number was there and you knew what it was. But they haven't followed suit since I came to Coop and. I don't know what it was, but since then, then they never followed, they never had the number that that early in the year.
Okay, well, no, and I appreciate explaining it and I know it.
We start in February.
And it's gotta be frustrating to have the same questions asked all the time by all these, it just, it would frustrate me, um but we have to.
There was one ye- there was one year when the conference committee number didn't come out until the week of Thanksgiving and we were here in your school. You guys were in in a meeting waiting for the number and we, school committee was up in the library, the Hubbardson Center School, figuring out the numbers. And then we were like, oh my god, we can get it to work and and you guys went to town meeting and got that 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 number for us. But that's how late they were. They were into Thanksgiving week before they had the budget set.
Yeah, so is there, from a, I'm just, you know, just asking here, from a a legislative standpoint, meaning our legislators, can, i- is there, have there been? Is there always concerted effort to try to let them know how big of a deal it is? To to standardize, I mean, do our, do our legislators, you know, act on our behalf on that sort of stuff?
Well, it's funny because that came up, we, Cheryl and I were at a Mass Association of Regional Schools um meeting last week. Where the new commissioner of education was there and this was one of the um things that, again, he's. Their de- their Department of Education, so that's one department of the of the entire state, but it is one of the things that all regional school superintendents. And there were some school committee members there as well, were, you know, w- were helping to make him aware. He's not a regional uh school guy, um and they were helping to hel- make him aware of how challenging this was. Um so I I mean, it's just one of those things that it, it doesn't see, it's definitely not logical. And people can't believe that it's actually really true because it's just so illogical in terms of, you know, having these required deadlines. That don't allow anyone to act with with accuracy accuracy in their calculations. It doesn't seem as that would be our uh our reality, but it is and and has been for a number of years, as Cheryl points out. So um I think it's.
Okay.
But but Senator Goby, when she was our representative and Senator Brewer, when he was our senator, they spent a lot of time in our districts. Many, much more than when I ever saw my former district. I don't think I've ever saw the senator or rep- in a meeting. Uh they both know and yet it still follows the same process year after year. They understand how it affects. We make sure that they hear us.
Yeah.
Oh, for sure.
Some low hanging fruit for for the board is uh chapter seventy-one, so regional transportation.
I was just about to, I just wrote myself a note on that.
The whole point of regional trans- regional schools was to save money. So regional transportation was promised at a hundred percent. Because you have to bus people around a region and they celebrated this year coming in at eighty.
Yeah, I was about to say that was, we gotta, we gotta.
But they passed a new law.
There's a ton of pressure put on them this year, though.
They they came to agreement that they will fund it at eighty percent so that we know what we can budget for.
Sure.
So how that happens, when we, when we send in our end of year report, which is due by September thirtieth, we know what our costs were for last year. And you don't get reimbursement on it and every dollar spent on transportation. You get every, a reimbursement on every dollar spent for the kids who ride the bus. Oh, at least a mile and a half.
Sure.
Two miles, I'm sorry. You have to pick them up within a mile and a half, two miles. So you don't get it for every dollar spent on transportation. It's a long formula that you fill out and you send it in. But at that point, then we know what that eighty percent reimbursement will be, so we could use that as a more solid number. Cause when that fluctuates in our budget and that dollar comes right to the towns, every dollar comes right to the towns, that's a big impact on your assessment.
What percentage of the budget is bus, transportation? Is it a huge?
A percentage of the budget.
Your budget's what, thirty-something million?
Um I don't have that specifically, but I have this.
I'm just curious.
I'm sending this around. I do have some some data here that's that's history, but I don't have chapter seventy-one. Um I think I could go and find it. This is good, Cheryl. I think I can go and find it though, as a percentage of the budget. So to piggyback on what Ryan, I think, was about to say was. That eighty percent that was celebrated came in late in the year, in July twentieth. And school committee accepted that and accepted a new calculation to be done within their September meeting. And I sent out new assessment letters that reduced your assessment in September. So eight thirty-six, seven seven four.
What'd you guess?
What is it? What'd you guess?
Ten percent.
Two point four percent of the total budget.
Yeah, well.
It's eight hundred and thirty-six thousand out of thirty-four million. So.
Thank you.
That doesn't include special education transportation though.
That's so. Uh they were asking what the reimbursement was as a part of, part of the revenue, right? That's what you asked.
Uh no, what the total amount of the cost.
Oh, cost of transportation in the budget.
Like I said.
No, that's it. Uh I can find it, it's gonna take me a minute.
All right, so let us um.
Is the special ed huge comparative, like the buses?
It's the same. Basically the same. It costs as much to transport our special education students as it is to run our twenty-four big yellow buses.
Really?
I thought it was fifty thousand bucks a bus. Is that a number that is real?
For a regular bus?
Yeah.
No, I think it's like sixty.
I thought it was.
It's up more.
I was thinking sixty.
So let me see.
So in the special education transportation isn't, isn't reimbursed.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Wait, do we get many kids at school choicing in?
We do have a a large number. I don't have the total off the top of my head.
We don't have this year's numbers yet. It's ba- it's over three hundred.
Yeah.
I can confidently say over three hundred. It was like three twenty-one last year.
And like, how many go out? Like, school choice out?
I can only look at one chart. But it's all in here.
Do another one, Jamie, do another one.
We did well, we stayed on agenda for.
Yeah, now we're good, we're almost up.
Uh while Sheila, while she's looking that up, um so the inter- the status of the inter-baccalaureate program, how's that doing?
It's it's doing very well. It's doing very well. We have um, we're well enrolled. The um, the students who sort of major in international baccalaureate, the diploma students, the students who take almost all classes. In their junior and senior year in uh international baccalaureate, there are eleven of them, five are juniors and six are seniors. That's typical for a school of our size. It's actually good enrollment for for um students, for a school of our size. But um we have um every junior and senior um student in English is enrolled in IB or AP. So all of our junior and senior English classes are AP or IB. Um and we have, you know, two or three courses in every other department that are um IB courses. They're all very well enrolled. You know, there are some very specialized courses, like for example, IB film, where we have three students. But it's not a standalone course. That course runs inside another class where there are a large student. So there aren't ever, there's not one teacher and three students meeting, but there are thr- on the, you know, on the roster, it looks like. There are only three students enrolled in that class, but the teacher will teach it simultaneously with another class. Um so the the courses are doing, are doing very well. Uh we're very pleased with the program. Um and, you know, we're we're looking to continue to um to expand the program. All of our um world language classes, um Spanish and French classes are are IB, use the IB curriculum. Um our s- um sign language courses don't because IB doesn't um recognize sign language as a, as a la- as a world language. Uh but but they use the same strategies and philosophy in teaching the um sign language as the French and Spanish. So we added a new course this year. It's um exercise science and um health and nutrition in um, in the science department. And that's has sixteen students enrolled in it. That's a year-long course and it's, um so we're excited about that course.
Great, okay.
We've also started um a vocational course along with an internship at Sterretts.
Oh, yeah.
There was a big need for more vocational and we can't duplicate, you know, what other vocational schools do. So we started, Sterretts actually approached us and um one of our high school teachers has gotten certified. They have to take this course in measuring first, which is a nationally recognized certificate that these students are gonna have. And then they can have paid internships up to, what is it, twenty dollars an hour?
Yeah, Sterretts.
Twenty-two dollars an hour at Sterretts, so.
Right, there was an article in the paper or something.
Yeah, that's that's just starting. Uh I think we have twenty-two students in that class, taking it so far. Um so that's something new and exciting.
Yeah.
And we're also beginning the process of looking into blended learning, which will be coming more in our future. I think rather quickly if Dr. Allen has this way, but that's integrating more technology into the classroom in different formats. On which students are gonna use technology to learn. Um so.
We also recently applied for a grant. It's a um career pathways grant. It's very competitive, so I'm not sure if we will receive it. But they, it's it's a new um grant that the, that the Department of Education is um, is offering. So I'm expecting if we don't get it this year, we might get it next year, but it's along the same lines of trying to organize our courses, coursework into career pathways. So that students can see if you take, you know, this series of courses and try to connect with um community colleges like Mount Watchas Community College. Or other employers where students can see sort of a direct pathway to a, to a career or a career area. If they don't, if they're not college-bound or if they don't, if they're not sure whether college is for them. So um that's, we're starting that work um this year and we we did a little bit last year, but we're we're gonna continue to try to grow those kinds of programs for our students as well.
Great.
Good. Transportation?
Seven percent.
Seven point four percent.
Oh.
So my memory's not as good as I thought. Three twenty-one was not last year. Um it was a couple of years earlier, so it was two hundred and ninety school's choice students last school year. Two hundred and ninety, and so, and I don't have school choice out here, so with my memory failing, I'm not gonna.
I remember Dr. Marshall saying with the um charter schools, when a kid went to a charter school, we had to pay for the. And what was, do you remember that? Was that like twelve?
Yeah, so so when a, when a student leaves us and goes somewhere else for school choice, we lose five thousand dollars. When a student comes to us from another town, like my stu- my sons did, we get five thousand dollars for them. When they go to a charter school, it's more between thirteen to sixteen thousand dollars that goes to the charter school.
From our budget.
Yes, our budget.
Your budget.
Yes, from our budget. It's in a, it's in a tuition outline.
Okay.
Well, it's not in my, yeah, tuition, eight, eight percent.
And actually, I think it's only Hubbardston students that are going to charter schools.
Right, right.
Because we have some close.
No, it's only, it's only Hubbardston, yeah, may, last year might have been only Hubbardston, Sizer School and Francis.
Sizer.
Yeah, and Parker.
Yeah.
Only Hubbardston, it used to be Barry, there used to be Barry kids as well, but only Hubbardston last year.
Okay. All right, well, moving along, um so we we had a a superintendent for a long time who talked about the process on uh winter mornings and and all that. So congratulations.
I know.
Could you talk to us a little bit about how, how things are gonna be um um conducted moving forward?
Hopefully it'll be conducted exactly the same way. Um I've, every, you know, when I've run into parents, I've tried to attend some school events. One of the things they ask me is, oh, are you gonna make, be making the snow calls? And I'm like, do you like the, the early evening snow calls? Do you like advanced notice, you know what? And all of the parents that I've, again, it was not a, not a scientific survey. It's just hor- sort of who I happen to see, but um it seems as though um families appreciate knowing as early as possible. Um that we're gonna have a delay, we're going to have a cancellation. We are um going to begin to work with um a company called Precision Weather. Um they've offered us a free um trial membership through the end of January. Uh apparently, um I I'm gonna meet with the, with the rep next week, but um it's supposed to be very um. Location um specific weather forecasting. They work with a lot of. They work with a lot of, or so they say. I haven't gotten the names, but they work with a lot of, um, highway, highway departments, a local highway departments. And, and some school districts are trying to expand into school districts, hence the, uh, four-month free trial membership. Um, but we'll, we'll try it and see, um, you know, if it, if it's helpful or not. It may, it may turn out not to be, uh, something worth, you know, investing in. Um, but I will, I will try to try that out this winter. And, um, you know, again, I anticipate following pretty much, um, the, the strategy that Dr. , that Dr. Marshall used in terms of communicating with, um, you know, highway departments and our plant and facilities manager about making sure that the school building, parking lots and sidewalks and everything are safe for, um, for our students and, and making those calls as early as, as reasonable. Um, I feel very strongly that I'd rather err on the side of caution and then, uh, to take a chance and, and have something. So, you know, as a result, sometimes we have more snow days than, um, other districts. But geographically, we have a very unique school district in terms of, you know, the distance between the north and the south. And, um, we wanna make sure that we keep all those children as safe as we can.
Okay, um, as far as, uh, you know, parents who may be coming into the district now, whether it's Hubbardston and other places, how do they make sure that they're on the contact list? How, how does that work that they're on, um?
On the one call system?
Is that just through, it's gonna happen through their school and all that?
Through their registration process.
So that's, there's no real, uh, poll in that policy?
It should not be.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Um, and then we have up there, right, so we had some scary stuff going on this year. Um, wha- what, you know, and I, I actually, you know, uh, when I found out about it, I think I found out through Facebook or something, somebody telling me, right? I actually reached out to, to Ryan and, and said, hey, what do you know? And, and he spoke to our chief and said, I don't know. Anyway, didn't feel as though, um, maybe all the towns, uh, especially with social media and the way things fly nowadays. I guess what's the process of when something happens within the town of Barry, because that's where the school is, for example, the high school and middle school? For, I guess, how, how can we make sure that, I guess, all the towns are notified so that we know, so that when we're called by parents of what's going on, what's going on? Um, you know, uh, I don't know. I guess what's the process? What do you go through right now when something like that happens?
So.
Barry police comes and go from there?
Well, I'm not sure what the question.
Like Stetson School, what does that mean?
Last year, there were, um, there were some students who had, um, left Stetson School, um, without authorization. And, um, they ended, uh, Barry was, apparently, I don't know the details of this particular incident, but what I, what I do know is that they were somehow in some, or they potentially were in the proximity of Hubbardston Center School. I think ultimately they were at the Barry Falls Dam or in that area when they were found. Um, and, and I know that somehow our principal was notified that, um, there were potentially some folks out in the, near the school that they weren't, you know, they didn't know whe- whether they were dangerous, whether they weren't dangerous. So, um, she kept all the students inside. I think maybe some students were at recess at that time. She brought them in and we did what's called a building restriction, which is, you know, you're in the building, no one's gonna leave the building. We can move around.
Basically a lockdown, right?
It wa- no, it wasn't a lockdown. It was, um, it was just keep, we, we're now calling that building restriction. So the terminology around school emergencies can be really confusing. And, um, so there's building restriction, which means everybody stays in the building. School takes place as normal, except if you are scheduled to go outside for your physical education class, you're not going outside, you're staying in. Um, and people aren't necessarily let into the building unless, well, they're never let into the building unless they're authorized anyway. Um, and then there's, um, what's called a shelter in place, which means you're in the building and you're staying put in wherever you are until further information is given to you. So if you're in a classroom, you stay in that classroom, you don't go to your next class. Um, and then, then there's, um, what used to be called the lockdown, that we're, we're calling the Alice Protocol. So if there were a threat, an immediate threat within the school building, then, then we would initiate the Alice Protocol. And we are doing, um, full revision or full evaluation, reevaluation of all our school emergency plans this year that worked started in the, in the spring and will continue through the year. Um, all of our teachers, all of our staff has been trained in the Alice Protocol, except our cafeteria people, which will be happening in, um, late January. Um, we've had a parent night, um, which unfortunately was very poorly attended, um, last month. And, um, we are have, we'll have updated information on, um, on the website to let people know about what our current protocols are, try to clarify the language around. Lots of times a school emergency, when a school emergency happens, luckily we don't have many of them. But people get confused as to, you know, if they hear shelter in place, sometimes they think the worst. Shelter in place can be as simple as we have someone with a medical situation in the building, a child or an adult, and we need to transport those, that person to either the nurse's office or out of the building in an ambulance. And we don't want anyone interfering with that process. We may not want anyone, you know, seeing the poor individual who's, who's been stricken ill. So we keep everybody in place for thirty minutes or half an hour, thirty minutes or fifteen minutes, whatever it takes to get that medical situation stabilized and, and taken care of. And then school goes on as, as normal. Um, so sometimes people, you know, fear the worst. Of course, you always probably fear the worst. Um, but sometimes they're, they're relatively, um, routine situations that just require us to sort of keep people in place for a few minutes so we can take care of a situation. So we're trying to, um, we, we have a flyer that we gave to, uh, the parents who attended the, um, the safety night that we had, and we will be sending that via email to all parents. I have copies tonight if you, if you would like to, uh, to see them. But that's happening and that will be ongoing throughout the school year.
Okay, it felt, I mean, you know, I understand about the sort of routine ones, but this one in particular was non-routine. And it didn't feel as though the people who should know what's going on knew what was going on fast enough.
So, so help me understand who you feel like might, might, should have known.
It was Stetson. Stetson didn't let the police department know. I think immediately that they were, uh.
And then, you know, the, the fact that they might be in Hubbardston, you know, I, I, whether our public safety sort of knew. I don't know. And I don't know if there's a written policy and all that. I just basically asked.
I think that's more on Stetson. And they, they're meeting with the Barry Selectment and, and there's been talks about a fence around the facility.
Yeah, so.
And, uh, their notification to the police department when the kids are missing, like, you know, cause I think there was a time lapse.
Yeah.
Where they didn't notify the police right away.
But even such, it make common sense to me would say. I, I know that Barry did a reverse nine-one-one, then he found up, found out about it because I have a couple Barry residents in my department. Would have made sense to me if they knew they were headed to Hubbardston, that the Barry police called the Hubbardston.
Correct, that's exact.
Right.
So, you know, that could be, you, you could address that through your police chief and say, listen.
Sure.
And we did. But the struggle was, um, some of our employees were getting texts from, cause they live or know in Barry.
In Barry, right.
And then we found out that way, so.
But we didn't.
We didn't know. It was the Barry, it was Barry reverse nine-one-one that went out, not ours.
So I, I don't know who noted, I can find out, but I don't know who notified our principal. But it didn't come through, it did not come from officially from the central office at all.
Could have been the same way that your employees found out.
Exactly.
Barry residents working in Hubbardston.
I think, I, I agree. I think the communication, and I know, you know, again, I don't know firsthand, but from reading what's been published, I think, you know, Barry is, the selectmen in Barry, the select board in Barry, has some concerns around, um, communication with Stetson.
Barry police have also put a school resource officer that we have a partnership with in our high school now.
And he also spends some time at Reddles Lane.
Yeah, so we do have someone there.
Okay, oh, that's good.
Yeah.
And getting a K nine too.
Uh, okay, so, uh, I think we've sort of hit on everything, um, that, that we had, uh, wanted to. And I don't know if anyone at, at the table here has anything else they, they wanna bring up or ask while we've got the forum here. Ryan?
Just, I appreciate the work of the committee. Uh, I'm gonna commit to coming to, uh, a meeting, in, in a budget meeting for sure. We'd love to have.
I'd be happy to sit down and meet with you anytime, any of you.
We'd love the board to liaison, um, maybe even formally, talk about budgeting and, and other issues.
Sure. Mark Wigler from Hubbardston is actually the chair of the budget. And I'm also, I've always been on the budget committee since I've been on the school committee as well, so. God bless, I know. I just wanna hang with you.
If we inform, Mark would be the one to tell about any agenda item and to formally invite.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's been the chair of that committee since I've been on.
And you're on, you're on.
I'm also on policy review and reform, the Q E M P and special ed. So if there's any special concerns with any of those.
I think you need to have some more kids maybe. Too many, too many meetings. Um, okay, well, I guess that's it unless you guys have anything else for us, but we very much appreciate you coming in. Okay, um, Ryan, you wanna go to Borrego?
Yes. So I, uh, our chief assessor here as well. I don't know her title. Super assessor. All right, to help. I'll get to him, most of the talking, but if we have any questions, the subject matter expert. Alright, so up in your packets and, and projected, um, I'm not gonna go over the entire contract, but, um, essentially the program that runs now, which, um, this, this project is falling into, dictates the amount that we can make on a pilot agreement for a solar program. They need the solar, solar pilot in place, the pilot agreement in place in order to continue into the program. So the numbers that you see, um, in the second paragraph here, in terms of the kilowatts, um, the conversion to, to AC megawatts, where it's located, all of this stuff is, is important and we're gonna be as accurate as possible. But once the final, um, design is in, these numbers change a little bit, uh, based off. So what's important is what we're agreeing to, to pay instead of taxes.
I can, I can, I can actually explain a little bit why they change unless you wanna do that.
Sure.
So, um, cause we do solar projects, um, you, you have a parcel of land that's not necessarily developed yet. And you have a certain footprint that you think you can actually put panels on and generate a certain amount of power. But then you get there and you do the survey and you do the retriever, whatever else, and you get through permitting process. And that changes because sometimes the topography or, or other factors change that and make it such that it usually reduces the amount. So, a- anyway, carry on.
Beautifully said. So up in, uh, I'm just gonna have directed the screen, it's easier than, cause this is a long contract. Page three, this B here, the AC nameplate, key number there, twelve eight seven eight, that's, uh, negotiated amount. We had an, uh, negotiation with Diane, myself, um, Jeff came and Al from the Board of Assessors. So that, that is the number that, um, Borrego agreed upon to multiply that by the, uh, the megawatts. And AC is what we calculated at the four point nine five. So what I handed out to you is that calculation, that standard pilot. So this is my attempt to get you as information as early as possible. We won't be making any decisions on this tonight. I just wanted to give you what is the template and we're still in negotiation. So there's two different breakouts here. One, you have the standard pilot. We would be making this agreement with Borrego and getting for twenty years the annual payments that you see listed there. And the highlighted number would be that total amount. What I also asked of them was that they do a calculation based off whether or not they could give us all the money upfront. So the reason why I asked them to do that calculation, and, and it's up for discussion of course, is this is one-time monies and one-time revenues. And the town should be able to decide when they wanna use that money and for what. So if there's a need to use one-time revenue, let's say to fund a vicious capital plan or build a building or any of those other type of things, it may be more advantageous for the town to consider taking that money upfront. So again, either way makes sense. I will be recommending that all of this money be put towards capital because it's one-time revenue, should go to one-time expenses, not be folded into the operating budget and used and then disappear in twenty years. Um, why is that number significantly lower? It's because of the way you do net present value calculations and the discount rate that we're currently looking at makes, um, the total value or the net present value considerably lower than say taking the money over twenty years. Just wanted to show you this. The full contract is in your, uh, in your packets. And Diane's here too to explain, um, anything. She's been instrumental in, in helping me draft this contract, working with Borrego and helping with growth generally in Hubbardston. So here for any questions.
Okay, well, I guess first one is just to, to refresh our memories there. The standard pilot, which, which is this one here that shows the, the increase. There's, there's a fixed percentage increase for twenty years, two and a half percent, right, which we've discussed, um, previously.
In, in negotiation, Diane made sure that they put two and a half percent in there, knowing that, that's what you'd want, so.
Okay. And then the pilot with project company, um, that's just a flat rate? As an example of what it would be if you were just gonna do a flat rate, uh, over the twenty-year term?
That's the net present value. So the cost of borrowing the money, so the, the cost of, of the, um, capitalize to them, so their return. If they were to pay you all the money upfront, that's all you get instead of a million for.
Yeah.
At their discount rate, which is industry standard at eight percent. Um, and that's where negotiations come into play.
How do they pay for this now? And I, I don't know if you've got that far of a discussion with them, but is this coming out of like, is this like a cash payment? Or do they borrow, in the event that they went with a one-year pay, first-year payment, big number?
Right.
Did they talk about how they would fund that?
They would borrow it.
They would borrow it.
Are they receptive of that? Have, did they do that?
Sure. Yep. So the, the drawback is you can see the difference in the amount the town gets. But it has a lot of benefits by having a large number. If the town has a plan for capital. Um, so what Ryan has provided you pretty much with is the extremes. So you have the one, which would be your typical town gets twenty years with a two and a half percent increase. Um, or take it all now. So you, you can have variations on that. The, the companies are pretty willing to do whatever you'd like to do as long as they're, they get their cotton.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, wanna make sure I understand the numbers here. So clearly, um, this one six four seven number is the aggregation of all of the annual payments here.
That's right.
And then there's a number down here that's seven hundred and sixty thousand, an annual payment of seven fifty. When I add those two, it doesn't add to that. So I was just wondering where that came from.
So that seven sixty number is the net present value calculation?
That's the discounted amount of money you're gonna get if you want it all upfront.
Got it.
So then, on the right, you get in year one, that full one big lump payment plus, um, Al from the Board of Assessors explained it really well. It's like the lottery. You either, you take that big money upfront or.
That's a good way. Now, how about, how, are there other options? You know, like, uh?
Sure.
So we're still negotiating.
Five-year plan, three-year plan?
You can.
Yeah.
We don't, I, I don't, like, I shouldn't say we, I don't like this number, so we're still negotiating.
Okay.
Um, but perhaps we ask for five years to extend that out with a lower discount rate.
Yeah.
And then maybe we get, you know, closer to a million, let's say. But it'll never be the one point six, cause they do have to charge us something.
Understood, no question about it. But yeah, no, I, I agree. This is interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, put it towards debt. Could you? Hey, uh, you know, if I had a truck or something?
You could put it towards anything.
Right.
Look at buildings we need too. Yeah, put some aside for a building if that's what they want.
Yeah. And so we have, um, how many active negotiations going on with solar right now?
Just this one, right?
Just the one, okay.
We hope there's a couple more coming soon, but comfortable thing.
A few that are being talked about.
Percolating.
And, and sometimes you hear solar's bad, but one point two or one point six million dollars is pretty good for the town.
This one's on a private piece of land. It'd be almost no visibility from, um, from the road. So, um, I'm, I'm not in the game of telling people it's a good project or a bad project, but some of the, the concerns I've heard about solar, this one doesn't have them.
Yeah, the view.
The big impact is to the homeowner. This is a private land. They would be absorbing this and, and being compensated for it. The, the town, um, if there's such thing, just wins on this type of agreement as long as.
Yeah, so just so that the residents realize that million dollars, the town, you know, roughly, give or take a little.
Yeah.
That we'll get from this project.
The win is town-owned land. If you have a piece of town-owned land, there, and a developer who has the appetite and has the access to, um, that facility and the three-phase line, then that is the win because the leases are big on town-owned land. And if you have an old dump, that's a big one.
Yeah, we do.
Because they're under the new smart program, they have an, a big adder on.
Well, our dump is owned by the state.
Oh.
It's on this, yeah. But we have other parcels though.
We've, we've put them on, company-wise, we've put them on a lot of landfills. It's very, very popular.
Yeah, a lot of landfills. They're, it's good money.
With the state.
About thirty thousand dollars an acre for a lease. It's nice. About thirty thousand dollars an acre for a lease, it's nice.
Wow.
Yeah, that's, that's what the going rate is right now.
So wanted to get this due as soon as possible, the reason being, um, there there is not, we we never rush on any decision like this, but we do wanna get into a certain um, area in the new program, which would facilitate getting this done sooner rather than later. Uh, but I will have updated negotiation options and and potentially a choice, um, based on continued discussions at the twenty ninth meeting.
Great.
And I would just, I think this would be the fifth farm in town, fifth or s-?
Sixth.
Sixth, so, okay, we're getting a lot of revenue from.
Yep.
Yeah.
But you get a plan in twenty years, all this revenue, well, unless they re-repurpos it.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, this is directed, right, your new town administrator has a, has a plan, unlike your, the previous projects were just, um, have just been um, consumed by the operating budget.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's not right, I don't believe it.
There's been, there was no long term plan for putting it away.
It's not best practice, there's reasons to do it.
Yeah, like you said, Ryan, I think that's a good idea because you get addicted to that money, and then once it's gone, you know, five of these solar farms were built within, let's say, three or four or five years of each other, all that money starts e- ending and now we're like.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You know, that happens with towns with landfills where they get the tipping fees every year, and then once that landfill closes, the town's like, they don't have that money coming in anymore.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds with this, but it, but an option for a sum of money like this is to pay for the entirety of your five year capital plan and free up your operating budget for for debt, so you can borrow for larger projects, which gives you more capacity. Um, so that's a way you can do it, or just making sure you're paying for capital and not building anything, not doing anything is is good practice and then it allows you to save money or um, make yourself more financially whole. To using this money to solve what is, and you'll hear it in my entry plan presentation, still the biggest problem in town, which is we need space and municipal buildings that need to be addressed, so obviously, you don't get a lot of this type of big chunk of money very often.
Uh huh.
And perhaps you use it to, to to fight your biggest problem.
Yeah, and that, when you go to the taxpayers and you know, s- you say you had two more farms coming and you could pay for the project, um, you know, potentially with solar money.
And this one dump of the money would, you know, build that type of trust in order to say that the next time this comes along, we'll use it to pay down debt rather than.
Yep. Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, what do you wanna do next?
So the capital plan funding discussion is sort of roundabout and then the um, the building department regionalization is is more directed, so I'll ask which way you wanna go.
Then, start with the second one.
The building department, okay.
Do we have any, um, yeah, okay, I got it, I got it.
Okay, so this is also in your packet, this is, um, I talked to Gardner today, so just to give a little backstory, we've been, I've exhausted every possibility for our building department to try and uh, figure out the best way to to approach this. There there is a dearth of building inspectors in our, in our region, um, at the level and the the ability, the capacity of our budget to fund one, meaning we're gonna pay for for what we get. So certain amount of hours, we don't quite meet enough hours to attract someone who's full time and so we'd have to regionalize in some way, so I spoke with Barry, I spoke with Westminster, I spoke with Princeton. Um, there's a group meeting this week in West Boylston because they're having the same problem and couldn't hire somebody and uh, have also spoken with Gardner, so it is my opinion that this agreement represents our best opportunity to figure out this problem. So here's what the current I M A would would give us, and again, this isn't a decision for tonight, this is information to hopefully make a decision on the twenty ninth of October. So this was a um, grant initiated by Gardner and Brian in order to study regionalization for uh, building department services. So done by the Collin Center, what they've done is analyzed both of our departments, analyzed our weaknesses and strengths, Gardner's capacity to take us on, what the cost should be. They were able to negotiate through the town, um, through the the grant, the funding of our side of this part of the grant for the remainder of the year. So we'd be paying Gardner eight thousand dollars through the community compact grant in order to use their services for the year and collect data. So that's a win for us in terms of the budget, because we would no longer have to pay uh, this year for our building department.
So collect data relative to whether it's working or not?
Correct, so this would run from November to the end of June and would collect the following data, and then I'll explain how it would work. It's a little wonky with the word. Well, I'll just explain it, the number of permits uh, taken, the amount of time it takes to to process a permit, um, the efficiency of the inspectors as they're doing the permitting process, the number of re- Hubbardson residents to contact our office versus constant Gardner, right? So you can imagine just a, a full survey of of how is this regionalization working and how would any regionalization work between a city and a town providing the service? So this would be like a trial run just to see. So we would retain our our administrative assistant and that person would be, for all intents and purposes, the person that people see in Hubbardson, they would, um, unless they wanted to, would not have to go to Gardner in order to get the services. So they would come, they would apply for the permit, and then on our end, we would send that information to Gardner and have the full access to their uh, to their inspectional services. So that includes building, wire, plumbing and gas, um, so we would just schedule using a Gmail calendar and they would come and inspect, we would close the loop on that, collect and and retain our own revenue and fees.
So, we've recently had some discussions, um, for long term, I've had some discussions about who our enforcement officer is, relative to, you know, some some of the stuff we talked to the planning board and all that. Um, wh- what, how how does that?
So their inspectors would serve as our zoning enforcement officers as well, and by, so Patty, she's our administrative assistant, would schedule a zoning issue, that's either been identified by staff or by a resident.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
And then they would come out and do the zoning enforcement.
And they already have a process in the city of Gardner to have a hearing when, if someone is cited.
They do, and that's one of the collection items is, you know, what is the cost benefit analysis for them of doing that for us?
Right, no, understood, but that's sort of killing two birds with one stone, something we've talked about for a long time, trying to figure out how to implement, and it's just sort of happening organically if we went to Gardner to have um, inspectional services assistance.
Yes, so the, um, at the end of that, we'd also analyze costs and things like that, so, um, this is, you know, we budgeted for a part time building inspector plus we pay per inspection for wire, it's, we would not be doing that now, we'd be paying fat, flat fee to access Gardner's services.
And this is through, when again?
This would be November one through, or if we had to push it, we could, but November one through uh, June thirtieth.
We would probably have to review Gardner's policy.
How would that work with like a solar project with Daryl? Cause right now, you get to a really large portion of that, cause of the amount of inspections, how would that relate to if Gardner was doing it and we, we collect all that?
As it, as it stands now, we would.
Yeah, that's kinda feels like a no brainer, wow, at least they get the trial period here, right?
Yeah.
They're still, they're still looking at it, reviewing it, I I did talk to him today and they said they're, you know, I said, should I present this, cause I don't wanna pull it back, there's obviously, until it's signed, there's that opportunity, so I don't wanna say that this is a hundred percent, but I wanted to make sure that we wanted. I was gonna ask for a vote for me to continue to negotiate this I M A.
Yeah.
Um, we need to make a decision before November first, as you know.
Yep.
Um, the other option right now would be to go out and try and hire, and that has failed miserably in other towns, so.
If nothing else, this just gives us some more time to try to figure out other options, you know, so.
And Gardner as well, and and questions like that are gonna come up again, as we talk about it and uh, we'll have to refine this and and make it as fair as possible between the city and town.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It could work the other way, if we don't have anything, then, then they make money on the deal, so.
Yeah.
Okay, someone want him?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue discussions with this, with Gardner.
Second emotion? Discussion, in favor?
Yes.
Yes, animus, okay.
Nice.
Yeah.
Uh, they've been really helpful, Collin Center's been really helpful, uh, so, okay, um, capital, this is, this is gonna be a little, this is, I'm just trying to share information as I get it, so we are. Um, this you don't have in your packet, yeah, this was added today, so this is very draft, not, everything's public for it, but this isn't something that we're, we're finalizing, but this i- this is the first draft of the um, capital plan as we're, we've contracted with the Collin Center through a grant to do. Um, they are currently taking out anything that doesn't make sense based off secondary conversations and then they're gonna score all of these projects and put them in a priority order.
Let me explain, can I just jump in real quick?
Sure.
So just format wise, we've got in the left column F D four, obviously, that's fire department four, fire department five, some project title, description, whatnot, I had to do this for the town center committee, as I said, there was a form that we had to feed it with information that had this, you had to put like, what years you maybe thought it would happen, how much it's gonna estimate a cost, all that sort of stuff. And so then Collin Center took all that info and generated this.
Yes, so this is, we've tried to capture everything, um, but people saw this and they were, you know, just keep it blunt, they were like, oh crap, we need to add things, right, so everybody adjusted, uh, just so there's no sticker shock, I want you to see these numbers here.
And we do have a summary in our budget, you did include that.
Yes, so I'll get to that, but this is, um, you know, five million dollars in capital, so what that includes, what this number includes, and this is gonna be coming out formally in January, is also roadwork, strap grants, anything that's considered one time.
That's, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that doesn't mean we have to come up with five million free cash for the next five years, I don't, I don't want anyone to panic.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's what this looks like, um, then we went over with them. I'll just throw it up here, what we currently borrow, how much we spend on our budget and capital since two thousand seventeen, so that's what this spreadsheet is. And I'm just showing it so you see what it looks like, I'm really not getting into the weeds of the numbers, what we still have left to borrow and what those numbers are gonna look like, and I had them project that out ten years.
Yeah.
So we could put this into um, to a decision, and one of the things you're gonna hear me talking about is this year twenty twenty three, so that's when all of our current debt drops off, besides the six hundred and now thirty thousand from this, the C P A commitment we made tonight. Uh, that we'll be borrowing in the next year or two, so we're borrowing, this comes out of the operating budget and they were analyzing how much capacity we had to continue to borrow to fund things like uh, one time capital and bigger projects such as buildings, et cetera. I asked them to take the buildings out of it, cause the whole goal for me for this capital plan is if we do nothing else, here's how we can be solvent and make sure that we're running a well-run town for the next five, ten years, without any other bigger decisions layered on, layered on to it. So then I added in your packets, I believe, the overall. Sorry, man, didn't have these called up. These numbers aren't, aren't final, but I just wanted to show them to you, I don't like shocking people. Okay, so this is by department, that breakdown, this is over the next five years, so no, Travis is not addicted to spending, that includes all the road money, so, all the roads are baked into that.
I wouldn't talk.
Strap grants.
Yeah, it's gonna be one.
Town administrator, eight points.
The town administrators, uh, that, that one includes an eight point five million dollar earmark for buildings and et cetera, what we need.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's, that's just a number that we were using to assess debt and other, and other things like that, so the the point of showing you this is, this is a very comprehensive plan, we're getting our monies worth and these numbers are gonna be real and we're gonna be placing them into decision-making context, uh, for you.
So just real quick, so town center committee, this is, just to, cause again, I was directly involved in one of these, that doesn't have anything to do with the actual reconstruction of the town, the the town center, um, specific to the projects that's already underway, these are like ancillary projects, like a sidewalk up High Street. Or cleaning up the area in between the uh, school and the library, or, you know, just whatever we could sort of dream up as a town center committee, we picked like five or six priorities and said, okay, this is gonna cost this much, this is gonna cost this much, and as you can see there, that's what it got to, so anyway, that's kinda how the process went.
So where does this, where does this go next, is, uh, so what's not included in here is any library rebuild or renovation, which is something that that can be considered, especially if town offices move out. And then the school, the Hubbardson Center School is gonna need a roof, whether that is two years from now or seven years from now, they're making that decision and they're gonna let us know, and that's gonna be a million dollar, a million dollar plus project. So those things aren't on here, but they will be uh, included in this plan, so the goal of this plan is not to sugarcoat anything, it's to say, this is what the town needs for the next five to ten years. And then they'll prioritize it based off of everyone, every department's prioritize, and then this will be presented to you and other decision-makers in the community to say, what do we wanna do with it? Um, and we will do our best to carve out anything that's not necessary and we've pushed everything that's not five years off into the, we also have this to do category, so that decisions make sense in context.
What did uh, what did Bella ask for with recycling center?
Shed, right?
Uh, yeah, there's a shed and an oil burner and lights.
And lights.
Okay.
Electricity, so she can try the appliances and stuff.
So that's.
Okay.
That's where we're at with capital, so why did I wanna throw this at you again tonight, it's because we just talked to you about the solar.
Yeah.
Pilot, we're trying to find pools of money to help pay for a lot of these things and uh, one time revenue sources are a good way to do that, so if you look at these totals, you know, putting money from the solar project towards some of them helps. We're also investigating uh, how much it would really cost as you, as you asked me to do for for building construction of many different varieties, whether that be um, buildings that have been discussed in the past, so senior center, public safety, towns, town hall and library renovation. Pulling everything out of all the feasibility studies and conversations that have happened in the past, so you can expect us to continue to refine this and bring you more information, I just wanted to see, you to see the first.
Yeah.
I don't wanna surprise any people with a bunch of information at once, so here's where we're at.
I'm gonna have to scoot in a couple minutes, Ryan.
I'm gonna talk fast.
No, I mean, Jeff, Jeff, you can, you're in charge.
Okay, so, uh, that, that is the capital plan funding discussion in the details.
Awesome, easy peasy, twenty million.
We should uh, maybe look into some municipal solar.
I know, man.
We've got, we've got parcels.
If we have a new building, we'll have a big roof, stick them on the roof.
All right, so what do you wanna do, we don't need to do.
The minutes, that can be.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, I I just have to believe myself, you guys can figure it out.
There's not much more anyways, he just has a town administrator report.
Oh, that's not. All right, why don't we go to that? Can we do that now?
Yes, we can.
It's like board goals, we can push that off?
Yes.
I'll do a quick committee update while he calls that up, the Q E M P task force, um, where we're at now is we're in working groups, I think I explained that to you, the four different sects, sections of it, economic development, shared services, that sort of thing, I'm part of the shared services working group, that's gonna be the next step moving forward there. But this Wednesday, two of the other, economic development and uh, building reuse strategies, those working groups are actually gonna meet uh, this time and then we'll meet next time and whatever, we're just trying to keep it alive, so that's a quick one on the the task force. And then the town center committee, we're actually meeting on the twenty fifth, Thursday the twenty fifth, to get an update on the Elm Street sidewalk, to get an update uh, from T E C on the twenty five percent. And then some design plans for the newly extended town center project with the sidewalks all the way uh, through the rec field and then um, we're also, cause we sort of started it a few years ago, we're gonna talk about the lighting ceremony and details for that and how, when we're gonna do that and all that stuff, so quick update there.
All right, uh, for the board, for my town administrator report, uh, the results of the I T community compact grant are to be released on Tuesday, but we were notified that we did get one, um, the information's embargoed, but we will be getting some money for I T.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
We got some?
We did.
See?
It's cause it's embargoed, Lori, it's embargoed, the um, procurement process for the fire department exhaust removal system is continuing, Wednesday we'll be opening those bids. Uh, hoping for a positive result and to get that uh, really important project moving forward.
Fifty, is that what we allocated?
Fifty three seven. And then the, um, our professional development is continuing to be focused, I went to boot, although I don't agree with calling it boot camp, cause I went to boot camp, but new manager boot camp was Friday, um.
How would you do a boot camp if you had to go to it again? How would you do a boot camp if you had to do it again?
Uh, my boot camp was a little.
Real, real boot camp, that's what I mean.
I would, I would kill it.
Oh. Okay, okay, sorry.
Kill it with all this knowledge now, right, so I'm also going to uh, FinCom training and uh, M M A training in October, just continuing to model professional development for our staff, encouraging folks to continue to attend. The Evergreen Bridge replacement project, this design hearing we talked about, uh, it's important, uh, I took this hearing as an important milestone to update the board on pending infrastructure projects, we have a lot there. Um, it's been quite an effort for me to just gather them all in, as as you mentioned that I might need to do, so I'm gonna regurgitate all of that back and uh, try and get a good list and statuses so we can prioritize them and focus on them. I wanna make sure we don't miss anything, a lot of this is federal dollars and and monies that can come out of our capital plan, so I've been focusing on that. So, I've been focusing on that. Uh, continuing the building needs investigation, uh, so I've been devoting some time to this, I met with an architect, this is uh tomorrow, but I actually met with an architect today to talk about what it would, what it would entail to refresh some of these plans, I'll I'll have some of that information uh for you, so this would be how much, he took all the plans that we had in the past, and he's gonna sort of update some costs and put things into perspective.
For free?
Um, this initial one would be for free, give us a scope of services for
First one's always free.
It would, there would be a cost to, we won't do a full feasibility study, because I don't think it's necessary.
Right.
But we'd be asking this architect to provide us with real information in order to make um an informed decision, if that's where the board wants to go on what to do next, whether to try design again, to do nothing, uh, to go to the community and ask what they wanna do.
How'd you choose an architect?
Uh, I spoke with uh some some town administrators and had them recommend someone that um could handle our size town and what we need, which is creativity. The uh wage study, so uh preparing a contract with human resources services to update our wage scales, this is best practices every four to five years, and we're in that window. Um, should have something for the board to review and approve uh before the budget season comes around, so this is where we at, how can we stay competitive, are we properly paying our our folks, but mostly we're focused on parity, making sure that our employees feel they're being paid the same for the same services. Lot of money, you can tell it's coming to budget season, five-year financial forecast, I have this, I'm working with the accountant's first draft uh, in order to hit that deadline I have of December, to present you with the five-year financial forecast, this is operating budget.
Generally, what did you do for schools, did you say, okay, I'm gonna look back the last ten years, take an average of what the percentage increase has been and just use that, or was it you know?
So, the last one had a blanket, uh, six percent is actually the forecast, I I'll be doing an average, I'll be changing that to do more of an average. I think that number's too high. Uh, five-year capital plan, we went over this in detail, uh, this will be presented right after the forecast, and both of them will form a decision-making tool. And then employee recognition, if you go across, I would say the street, the sidewalk to our um library, Jenny did a good job. It's like a little haunted house in there, freaks me out every time with all the spiders, so enjoy that, it's Halloween, and our staff is taking Halloween very seriously. I may dress up at our next meeting, I'm not sure. So, some topics, um that entry plan, the uh, the reason why it's been delayed is because I want, I more than wanna focus on some of these needs that I've been investigating and including the budget, so it's it's not a delay, except I wanted to be, offer some actual recommendations for you to focus my work for the next uh two to three years. And then, uh, quarter one financial report, be giving that to the finance committee, and then coming back to you on the twenty-ninth with that. Revenue projections are in November, and the forecasts and the capital plan are in December and January.
Okay, thank you. Um do you mind if we just push off some minutes too?
It's only that one, it's up to you, I don't care, it's only that one.
We serve at the pleasure of the board.
Whatever we'd like to do.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second emotion.
Uh, I wasn't even here.
No.
No, you weren't here.
Jamie wants.
Uh, discussion? On favor?
Yep.
Yes.
Staying. Um, matter's not reasonably anticipated by the chair, is there anything else you wanna bring up? Anyone else at the table here?
No.
Hey, what did you say the day was on those minutes? Twenty-fifth, the twenty?
June twenty-fifth. And uh, okay, anything from the public, go ahead. No?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second emotion.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.